Call the meeting to order if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, as a community, we are in need of wisdom to make the right decisions. Perseverance to build upon the hopes of the people and patience because the pathway is not always clear. The difficult work of governing continues. Bless the leaders of this county, this state, and this country as they tackle the ongoing issues challenging us. Amen.
Okay. Um, there are no changes or alterations to the agenda as originally written.
I would like to-
I think that's the first time I've ever said that.
Okay. Well, I would like to remove item seven C from the agenda. That's the rezoning application. We just got the proffers fifteen minutes ago. And I would like to remove it from the agenda for tonight.
Okay. So that is deleted and that is put back on the agenda when?
Next meeting, I would suspect.
Okay. Uh, any other changes?
Uh, just a minute. Okay.
That's it? Alright, with that then, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Still moved.
Second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, onto the consent agenda, if I could get a motion on that, please.
Still moved. Second it.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to public appearances and employee of the month.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our May employee of the month began working for Orange County in May of nineteen ninety and was nominated by his supervisor and his peers. This employee is extremely dedicated to the overall good of his office and the county as a whole. He's worked exceptionally hard to fill the void in staffing levels, worked tirelessly on the FY fourteen budget, and was intensely involved in the reorganization of their, his department, and most recently revamped his office's merit evaluations. His extensive knowledge and involvement in seeking out numerous grant opportunities has been instrumental in the successful award of many grants, helping to supplement and reduce costs for his department. He led his office through the budget process and has taken it upon himself to learn the ropes of the new website in order to be prepared for the successful website launch. He is also always generous with his time, assistance, and data when asked. It's with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to the board our employee of the month, Chief Deputy Major Mike LaCasse.
I still say the best thing is when they see their fa- you see their faces when they realize, they're talking about me.
And we do have one service award this, this month, but that person is not able to attend. It's Jonathan, Jonathan Banker. He's been with the sheriff's office for five years and he's an investigator.
Alright, well, with that then, we move to the business spotlight, Lori Holiday, owner of Lori Holiday Anterior's.
Thank you very much. I'm delighted to have this opportunity to let you all know a little bit about our business in Gordonsville. Uh, it's called Lori Holiday Anterior's. I run the business with my husband Jim Holiday, who was born in Orange County, uh, grew up in, in Gordonsville, uh, worked for American Press until they closed a few years ago, and we work together now. Um, we are absolutely delighted and very gratified that, uh, our business is actually a continuation of two family businesses. Uh, my father started, um, a business in Princeton, New Jersey in about nineteen forty-six. Um, home furnishings, lamp repair, rewiring, custom lamp work, furniture, accessories. Uh, and Jim's grandfather, James Minor Holiday, um, from Gordonsville, started originally, um, Holiday Taylor Construction, and then, uh, the business continued until, uh, the mid-seventies. So we, we feel very, very good about that. Um, our business is located at one twenty-three South Main Street in Gordonsville. It is across from the town hall, up from Palm, and next to the liquor store. Uh, when people are not sure where the other locations are, usually we remember where that is. Um, we are open every day of the week. We feel that's extremely important. Uh, Monday through Friday from ten until five-thirty, uh, Saturday from ten until five, and Sunday from eleventh until three, or whenever the customers stop coming in. Uh, we, uh, so, as I mentioned, we have home furnishings, we have lovely furniture, custom upholstery, leather furniture, um, uh, wonderful gift items, accessories. Uh, we specialize in lamp repair and rewiring and custom lamp work, and that's what my husband does. Um, he calls it Mr. Holiday's Lamp Repair. Uh, and we do all the work on the premises. Uh, we also supply a lot of lamp shades, um, that, uh, seems to be very, you know, much needed. And when we opened our business, we decided that, I mean, what I should say is that we would not have opened our business unless we were offering an everyday service. We feel that that's remarkably important to, uh, bring customers in who might not ordinarily come through the door. And that has been, um, you know, it's building all the time. We've been there now for five and a half years. And, um, our location, um, seems to be great and, you know, people, we have people from Fredericksburg, uh, Richmond, Northern Virginia, Charlottesville, all over. Um, we also find that there's a delightful partnership, uh, between a lot of the merchants in, um, Orange, the town of Orange, uh, and in the county, um, and, and also the town of Gordonsville. We're constantly telling people, you know, asking them why they're in the area and if they're visiting. Have you, you know, have you been to Sparks for lunch? Have you been to Montpelier? Have you been to the shops in downtown Orange? So we feel that that is extraordinarily important. Um, I will say that the, the only, um, difficulty that I see is that there is a, a lack of consistency in hours of operation for a lot of the shops. So sometimes it's a little tough for us to, to recommend, you know, on a Sunday or a Monday, or sometimes a Tuesday, sometimes even a Wednesday, to, you know, where can people go? Um, but, uh, so, so we're open all the time, so we don't ever have that negative feedback. Um, but, uh, we, we certainly invite, um, all of you to come and visit. Um, and we're, as I mentioned, we're there all the time. And, uh, we are very anxious to, um, to have more customers and visitors from Orange and Gordonsville. Uh, most of our customers actually are not from Orange and Gordonsville. Um, and so we, we recognize that. We, we would love for that to change. Um, perhaps some of it is a perception, you know, that maybe it's, oh, they're, you know, it's expensive or, uh, you know, they might not, we might not have what people are looking for. But I just, um, think it, I just want to really encourage people to visit all the shops, whether they're in Gordonsville or Orange. Just occasionally, you don't have to buy anything, just to come in and see what's going on. Um, I think you'd be, um, surprised and hopefully delighted and impressed maybe. Uh, and, and I think that the bottom line is that the word of mouth is the best advertising. And that's really what we're, we're striving for. So, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to, to speak with you all. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They have a nice little addition on Main Street in Gordonsville.
Oh, I wanted to show you, you know what, I was holding on to this. Holiday Brothers, um, that was an apron from probably the nineteen thirties.
Wow.
Uh, and then this was an ad from one of the old Gordonsville, uh, yearbooks. Or no, this is Orange County news. This was, uh, Holiday Brothers nineteen, I think Jim said this was in the mid-thirties. We have a lot of, a lot of, uh, items like that that we're gonna put up in the shop. Thank you again.
I'm sure Duff Green's got a picture somewhere or another.
I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. Alright, next would be the presentation of the High Rollers Classic Basketball Tournament Trophy.
Goodness, look at that.
On April twenty-seventh, we held the High Rollers Classic, featuring the wheelchair basketball team I work with, the Shenandoah Valley High Rollers versus three teams of levels. The Orange Hot Shots, which was the Orange Volunteer Fire Company, the Orange County Defenders, which was Sheriff's Office, and Orange and Gordonville Town Police, and the Orange County All-Stars coached by Mrs. Sons, and featuring player extraordinary, Chairman. The event served three purposes. First was a food drive for the Love Outreach Pantry, Food Pantry. The second was a fundraiser for the OCHS basketball teams. And the third was to provide a little public awareness for adaptive sports. With Orange Review coverage, thanks, we provide, definitely raise some awareness with their coverage. The basketball teams, through admissions and concessions, raised funds to help with summer camps. And the food pantry was the biggest one. Last year, our first event took in three hundred and seven pounds of donated food. This year, the All-Stars alone brought in over five hundred pounds, and the grand total was eight hundred and fifty-two pounds of food for the pantry. They were overwhelmed when we got there. We just, we kept bringing boxes in and they just kept saying, God bless you, so I, I think I'm good for a while. Next year, we're going for the half-time challenge. We're looking to raise, uh, a thousand pounds, over a thousand pounds of food.
You just need to tell Food Line that they need to stock up on the cases before we, we all go in.
This is a tough time for them. The Halliday's, they get lots of donations. The spring, they don't get much. And with the summer coming up, all the free lunch kits, they're home on their own a lot of times. They don't get that free breakfast or lunch. The summer is a big time for them, so they were very appreciative. That being said, the All-Stars won the trophy again. It is engraved. They get to keep it for another year. And there are several groups that are already talking about taking the trophy.
Do you and Jim want to accept? Jim Crow's would find you too, Tim.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say this. I know when I got up the next day, my arm hurts.
There we go.
Put it back where it belongs.
I'm putting a turnip spot up there for it. It's not going anywhere.
Okay. Uh, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, no speakers.
Okay, in that case, board comment.
Uh, yeah, uh, we had our meeting, uh, trying to work on the Route Three Corridor Plan with the EDA, Planning Commission and Board last Thursday. Uh, as you know, we're trying to work, uh, the, uh, agreed to, uh, retreat. And we're still looking at dates, uh, right now. I guess the latest possibility is, is July, but it could be even, uh, later. And rather than let things lie fallow for a couple of months, uh, we were thinking of a couple of things to sort of, uh, alert the public to that, uh, what we're trying to do. Uh, and we thought we might, uh, have a, uh, sort of a presentation, maybe an abbreviated presentation that was given to the, given last Thursday night, uh, to the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, representatives of the Chamber of Commerce. And then possibly another one, uh, down at the other end, uh, to the homeowner, the three homeowners associations that are, that are, uh, would be affected down at that end. Uh, and at least the one that we would do down there, uh, we would try to tape it such that it would be available at the libraries and, uh, and, uh, various, uh, other media, possibly sticking it on YouTube so that anybody in the community could see what we're trying to do. Uh, a second thing would be to ask the, uh, ask the, uh, EDA to, uh, look at, uh, the topography and infrastructure and what might be potential, uh, sites for, uh, industry, uh, applications. Uh, and let them just start, you know, looking to see what kinds of, uh, space would, uh, would work. Uh, not making any selections, but just looking from the technical standpoint, gathering the data that we would need subsequently to make, uh, decisions. Uh, and looking, uh, to the Planning Commission, maybe to, uh, find, uh, some potential zoning, uh, uh, rules for various zoning categories that we might use down there. Uh, none of that, most of that all being, uh, uh, data gathering to supply the group as a whole as we start, uh, processing, uh, whatever we're going to do for that. Uh, Jim and I would probably, uh, go ahead and try to take on some of that to, uh, since we've been working this thing, and we'd continue to try to do that, uh, for the, uh, for the foreseeable future. And, but the idea is not to let this thing lie fallow for, uh, for some period of time. We've got a little bit of, uh, a little bit of momentum moving, and we just want to keep the momentum going.
Okay. Yeah, I think a lot of the topography should, should be relatively quick to find along the corridor.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, uh, it's that plus, uh, the kinds of businesses that, uh, might, uh, might be able to, uh, they would se- seek to go. Sort of an EDA kind of thing to, to, uh, to work their, uh, their part of it in advance. Again, they're not, they're not, not making decisions, nor are the Planning Commission making any decisions. They're basically just, uh, coming up with the, uh, information available to all of us.
Okay. Anything else?
Did you want to put something on the website?
Oh, yeah, we're also, uh, talking about putting a, uh, a, a short blurb on the website, uh, explaining what we're trying to do so that, uh, uh, you know, we have some information out to the public in general. But I think as soon as we get a, uh, video of, uh, of Jim doing an abbreviated present, presentation like he did to us the other night.
Well, we definitely could start off-
My money's on late.
We could definitely start off with the information that was given to us the other night and-
Yeah.
Putting that, um-
Those slides?
Putting-
The presentations on the website, but the technical supplement isn't, but we can work to do that.
And, um, you know, maybe not all of it, 'cause I mean, some of it is stuff that's already out there anyway.
Yeah, I think the idea of, of-
But-
-letting people know where we're, where we're trying to go. But, uh, we figured that, uh, a couple of meetings, uh, presenting two people and, uh, and then videotaping, uh, uh, one so that it would be available to everybody who's interested in, uh, in seeing what we're trying to do. Uh, we figure the best way to deal with rumors is to provide them as much information as we can.
I would agree. Okay. Anything else then? Alright, uh, it takes us to the action items. First one, supplemental appropriation from contingency for delinquent property tax. Glenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, as you know, the county operates a program for the collection of delinquent property taxes that includes, um, the sale of property as a last resort in order to collect, uh, back taxes. And at those sales, um, there are typically surplus funds that are held by the court for two years to see if, um, any heirs come forward and make claims on that. If they don't within a two-year period, those funds come back to the county. And it's with those funds that, um, we pretty much fund the entire program, all the cost, um, that are associated with, uh, the advertisements and so forth, court costs that have to be done, um, in order to get these properties to the point of sale. Um, this particular year, um, we budgeted sixty-nine thousand dollars, um, for those expenses. At the end of March, we had spent seventy-four thousand dollars. So I'm asking for an amendment, which I, um, had to estimate what I thought might get us through June thirtieth. Um, there is the possibility of, um, being reimbursed for some of these funds. They've had some delays due to, um, some claims, heirs have come forward on some of the funds that would have already been released to the county. Um, so while we have a possibility of sort of recouping this money, um, that we need it for the current fiscal year in order to pay for the expenditures that are occurring.
Okay.
Still moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next would be the taxiway rehabilitation construction. Kurt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, uh, we have my memo. Um, I started, I started putting this memo together. And, and I laid out all the timelines. Uh, I don't generally ask for a motion upfront for everything, but it just seemed to make sense as I put this all together. To try to go ahead and, uh, get all the board actions that's necessary throughout this whole project, um, in my, in my mind. In essence, and the way I put it in this memo, um, we need to, a- as is the case with all airport projects that we're seeking funds for, we first have to let, even though we have ACIP, we also have to let the Aviation Board know that we, uh, intend to proceed with the project in advance of their upcoming meeting in August. So the first thing on this list is, um, letting you know our intentions. If it's approved by the board to seek grant funding, uh, for this project. Um, then what follows behind that is, uh, before the Aviation Board meets in August to consider our grant request, um, the application we have to put together has to have firm numbers. So I'm asking for us to be able to go ahead and advertise the project, uh, and receive bids in early July so that I have those firm numbers put in the grant application. Uh, and then from there, assuming that the grant is offered, um, I'm asking for us to have the ability to accept the grant and award the contract and move forward with construction in September.
One question.
I was gonna say that'll save you a lot of trips up in front of the board.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. A question, uh, is it possible that they might give us less than eighty percent?
They'll, they'll either, they'll either submit a grant at the eighty percent level or they won't fund it at all.
Okay, I, I'm just concerned if they came in with a sixty or seventy, seventy percent grant. Did we, were we then authorizing the, the difference?
Um, this project, this project, uh, is eligible for eighty percent funding, so it, they'll either fund it completely or they won't fund it at all.
Okay. Alright. I will so move.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next we move on to appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Mr. Lee Frame as our at-large member to the Central Virginia Regional Jail Board to be a temporary resident, not a permanent one. At his choice. I don't have to walk past any bars.
It's not so bad.
When you know you can get out, yes.
Oh, actually, you don't know you're gonna get out. Just so you know.
Alright. Sure.
Alright, uh, do we have any other appointments? I think we have a request to reappoint the Literary Control Committee Coordinator.
Yes, sir.
I would make that motion.
Okay. Any other appointments at the present time? So I know I still haven't talked to Pat, so I don't have an answer on that, although I'm sure she'll serve again. Um, alright, if there are no others then, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You can go to jail, Lee. Do not pass go. Do not collect two hundred dollars. Uh, next then would be the discussion items, requests from the four county players regarding shared funding. Tim? What, no trophy this trip? Okay.
I received a, first a phone call, informal phone call, from Row Helpin, who's the theater manager, uh, in discussions about the dumpster at Barbersville Park. And I'm talking to the county administrator. We suggested that they send a formal request, and you have that in writing. They are asking the cost of the help with paying for the dumpster. Uh, we do get quite a bit of use in the park, and since we put the logging trail in, the use is increasing. We also have, three nights a week, the teens are practicing, uh, youth baseball up there. So the park is getting a lot of use. Um, there's nothing currently in the budget in my line items, so we are here. The board is seeking your advice in dealing with the matter.
Well, I would say that we should do that, and I would start off with at least half, if not more.
My, my feeling is we should do something. I just didn't know where it was gonna come from. But with the, what they pay total, one thirty-three forty-two a month comes to-
Sixteen hundred, one dollar and four cents.
If we were to pay-
Do that in your head?
It would be eight hundred, sixty-six, uh, seventy-one a month, eight hundred dollars and fifty-two cents for the year. If we decided we would pay half for our busy months, which are heavy-use months, April through September, that would be four hundred dollars and twenty-six cents. So those are some numbers out there as to what we should pay for, is there to pay for.
Well, I, I mean, I would-
How much were you talking, eight hundred dollars?
Eight hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And the funding for that is from?
Contingency.
Contingency. Okay. I have no problem with that, if we, if we're out there using it.
Eight hundred. Eight hundred, just keep it. Well, I mean, I don't reckon it matters, but- We ma- I made the motion, Lee seconded it.
Is there any further discussion? You have something?
I was gonna say, do you wanna do that for this year and then should we amend the budget for next year to continue that for FY fourteen?
I would say yes.
That was your motion, right?
That, that's my amended emotion.
And that's my second, amended second.
And, and then letting them know that, at, at times, contracts change, and, you know, if it goes up, that, you know, it, it would, it would be upon them to come back and let us know. It's not, they're getting eight hundred dollars, you know, 'cause if their contract goes up to, you know, twenty thousand dollars, are we gonna dump the trash? You know, I'm just being kinda crazy, but.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, any question on the information items? Okay. Committee reports. I have one thing, um, on the RSA, you all met from two to two oh three?
Yeah.
What, what can you accomplish in three minutes? By the time you get in and set up the meeting, you're gone.
We basically get a report from the, uh, projects manager as where the various projects are taken.
That tells you they're not doing any projects.
Uh, no, we got some projects going, uh, and, uh, we spend the, uh, uh, we, we get the budget or the expenditures, uh, in advance. And if we have questions about the expenditures, they, uh, they come up. But, uh, generally, there's not too many questions about the expenditures. And, uh, unless, uh, somebody shows up and has an appeal for something, that's pretty much our, uh, our, uh, meeting. Occasionally, uh, occasionally the meetings go, uh, ten or fifteen minutes. Takes me, uh, an hour to get down to Green County, and an hour to get back.
Do the citizens of Orange County pay your mileage to go to that for a three-minute meeting? I mean, I'm just-
No, they don't.
Okay, 'cause I was just wondering, 'cause I think, I think I would pick up the phone and call them before I'd, not that driving to Madison isn't a beautiful ride, but, ooh.
Well, as, as board members of RSA, I get a hundred dollars a meeting. And my mileage comes out of that.
Well, what professions get a hundred dollars for three minutes?
Uh, I'll make the, let's make that to two hours and three minutes.
Okay.
Up there with heart surgeons.
Lawyers.
Clumsy.
I'm a lawyer. You go into a hundred dollars for three minutes? The ones that keep you from going- The ones that keep you from going by the bars.
That would, that would be a good one, yeah. All right, uh, anything else in the committee reports? All right, then calendar, scheduled public hearing for amendments to chapter twenty-six of the Orange Code. Uh, Tuesday the eleventh, an invitation to attend the ceremony. Um, I will do the, um, Lawson Kemper on the eleventh out in the middle of nowhere. Um, well, it's, it's a beautiful drive out there. And the twenty-sixth, that works then for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Well. Um.
It's six thirty.
It apparently must be six thirty because that would be the end of what we have except for closed meeting and public hearings that start at seven thirty.
Three hours from now?
Yeah. I guess then, uh, we should go into closed meeting and, and.
All right, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss enclosed meeting, the following matters. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you're in closed.